Welcome, everyone. I now call the September 12th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the Agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, their connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the City Clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Menke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. All right, first up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. The Regional Crisis Response Agency visioning sessions are coming. You can provide input about future crisis response services by attending this week's visioning sessions taking place September 13th and 14th. You can shape future transportation in Bothell by taking a short survey on the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element by September 30th. And we have Fire Prevention Week open house. You can celebrate Fire Prevention Week with Bothell Fire on Saturday, October 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Fire Station 42. We have a proclamation for welcoming Meek. Whereas our community's success depends on making sure that all Bothell residents feel welcome here, and today, new Bothell residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas welcoming week gives us the opportunity to honor the spirit of unity that brings neighbors together across Bothell and invites us to work together toward a prosperous and welcoming Bothell, in which diverse people from all across the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas the City of Bothell will celebrate its first annual welcoming week in 2023 to promote compassion, unity, and respect with a shared vision that all community members are valued and protected. And whereas the City Council's 2040 vision says, "For a day or a lifetime, no matter where you are, who you are, or where you're from, Bothell is everyone's hometown." And celebrating welcoming week is a step toward enacting that vision. And whereas our city recognizes and celebrates all that makes us unique, including our rich tapestry of ethnicities, religious beliefs, abilities, gender identities, sexual orientations, nationalities, neurodiversity, and life experiences. And whereas each Bothell resident has a unique role to play, one that no one else can fill, adding to the culture and shared well-being of this place we all call home. And now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim September 8th through 17th, 2023, to be welcoming week in the City of Bothell, and call on every community member to reach across lines of difference and participate in one or more of the welcoming week events put on by our community. We also call on business leaders, civic groups, agencies, and community institutions to undertake their own initiatives alongside the City of Bothell beyond welcoming week to make the region a more welcoming place for every new and long-term community member alike. And I believe we have Katie Boys and Erica Olson here to accept.
My name is Katie Boys. I'm the Librarian and Information Services Manager at the Bothell Library. We are happy and honored to be part of the City of Bothell's efforts toward creating a welcoming city for all. At King County Library System, we value diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we strive towards fostering a connected community of belonging. We carry books in 13 languages other than English in our library. We also offer free English language classes for English language learners. During the 2023 welcoming week, we're excited to be hosting Civic Saturday on September 16th at 11:00 a.m. at the Bothell Library. Civic Saturday is led by Erica Olson, who is a Civic Fellow trained by Citizen University to host Civic Saturday gatherings. Erica is going to share more about Civic Saturday.
Thanks, Katie. So I'm Erica. I'm a community volunteer, and I am what's known as a Civic Fellow. That means I was trained by an organization called Citizen University, which happens to be in Seattle, but is a national organization. And they developed this ritual called Civic Saturday. It's a time for us to come together as friends, as strangers, as neighbors, and just dedicate an hour to thinking about what it means to live like a citizen in our society today, in this American democracy, in this community of Bothell. And so that's what we do. That's what we'll be doing on Saturday, and we'll be reflecting particularly on this theme of welcoming. Because we know that when people feel accepted, included, valued, have a voice, they have a stake in what's happening in the community. And that's the beginning of us being able to truly realize the promise of this multiracial American democracy experiment. So you are all invited, you are all warmly welcomed, and if you can't make it this Saturday, we're doing it again in November and in January. And KCLS has the info on the website. So thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have a proclamation for Puget Sound Starts Here. Whereas Puget Sound and the waterways that connect our mountains to the shore contribute in numerous ways to Bothell's economic infrastructure, quality of life, and our natural resources. And whereas the City Council's environmental sustainability goal includes protecting the natural environment through integrated natural resource management. And whereas water quality is a priority for the health and welfare of Bothell citizens. And whereas Bothell has joined with state agencies and more than 750 local organizations, governments, and tribes to engage residents in protecting and improving local and regional water quality. And whereas Puget Sound Starts Here Month is an opportunity for the public to learn how they can help clean up Puget Sound and our local waterways. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the month September 2023 as Puget Sound Starts Here Month in the City of Bothell, Washington, and call upon all residents to protect natural resources by reducing and eliminating sources of water pollution. And I believe we have Kristy Cox here to accept.
Thank you very much. Button, okay. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Kristy Cox, and I'm one of the city's Surface Water Program coordinators. Puget Sound Starts Here Month shines a spotlight on simple ways that we can help keep water clean by preventing stormwater pollution. This is especially important because unlike our sewer system, Bothell's public drainage -- Bothell's public storm drainage system empties into the nearest body of water untreated. So we need to be mindful of what goes down the storm drains. Simple acts like picking up after your dog, using natural yard care methods instead of chemicals, and staying on top of your vehicle's maintenance needs may seem like minor things. But when we do these things consistently and collectively as a community, they can add up to a major impact on the health of our local streams and Puget Sound. You can learn more about Puget Sound Starts Here and take a pledge to protect water at Thank you for reading the proclamation tonight, and thank you for council's continued commitment to environmental stewardship here in Bothell.
And thank you for all the work you do. All right, next up, we have City Manager Report. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I have two brief updates to bring to you tonight. Both are of interest, I believe, to the whole community, and then certainly for the council as well. My first update is that earlier today, King County Elections moved the ballot box that was formerly right outside the front doors of City Hall over to the Bothell Library. That was something that had been requested after we had received feedback from voters in King County who were very grateful to have a local option to drop off their ballots, but also there were some difficulties for some of our voters to be able to access the location based on mobility and convenience in terms of being able to pull up, get out, and drop off their ballots. Working with Bothell Library and King County Elections, that location definitely provides a different level of circulation, and we're going to try that out for now, and then we're always welcome -- or we would always welcome the box back, but I think this will be a good option. So a couple of things with that is that King County is in the process of now updating the information on their website, and this -- the new location of being at the Library will be a part of the voter's pamphlet coming up this fall. And then also, just in general, a reminder for anybody who's watching at home, there are -- there's another location in King County, which is over at the University of Washington on the Bothell campus, next to the Activities and Recreation Center. So that's another place that people can go. Then, of course, for Snohomish County voters, there's a local drop location at the Canyon Park Place Shopping Center, right off of Bothell Everett Highway and 228th, near the QFC. You'll see me there. So that's the first update. The second one, I'm going to welcome Jason Greenspan to the podium. As council is aware, we've been in the middle of working through comprehensive plan amendments this year. It's something that takes place once a year. And there's an update on schedule related to one of the items, and so I've asked the Community Development Director to give a brief update. This information will be going on the website as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason.
Thanks very much. Good evening. This is to provide some background on one of the items that are -- that was on your approved 2023 docket. If you recall, we approved that docket earlier this year. In October of 2021, if we go back a little bit further, the city received a request for a comprehensive plan amendment to allow for the rezoning of a one-acre property owned by the Drews household. This property is currently zoned as residential 9600, and the request was to change it to the downtown transition affordable housing overlay zone. The property, if you're not familiar with it, is located at the northwest corner of 96th Avenue Northeast and Thor'sk. The purpose of that change was to change the zoning and allow for higher-density housing and the development of multifamily housing units at this site. It would also encourage the creation of affordable housing in this area. In terms of progress, the Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommended approval to the City Council back in October of last year. The City Council then, as I mentioned, placed this request on their docket for consideration and action this year. But what's come up recently is something called concurrency requirements. During preparations for tonight's study session, community development staff discovered that there is a requirement in our municipal code related to what is called concurrency. This requirement applies to rezoning or comprehensive plan amendment requests that increase density. Essentially, this means that the applicant needs to demonstrate that the necessary facilities and infrastructure will be available to handle potential traffic and roadway projects and impacts within six years of development at this site. And this is the applicant's responsibility. So while the concurrency evaluation was not initially included in the application, the Drews have been asked to complete this evaluation promptly. So in terms of next steps, once we receive and review the applicant's concurrency evaluation, staff is going to discuss those findings with the Planning Commission, and this is then going to enable us to schedule a study session with City Council in all likelihood later this year. So that's a quick update on this matter. If you have any questions, have to entertain them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Council Committee Reports. Councilmember Alderks.
I've got one from the Association of Washington City's Legislative Priorities Committee. We met today. They also met concurrently with the SCA Domestic Violence Task Force, and I was only able to be at one of them. So I have an update from AWC. The committee gathered from cities across the state and voted on legislative priorities that AWC would be lobbying for in the upcoming legislative session. And in no particular order, the priorities that were voted on were behavioral health, infrastructure, police recruitment, and tax policy. And so that's my update from the Legislative Priorities Committee. Thank you.
All right, next up is visitor comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the City Clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all City Council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but on the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
We do. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. First, before I get to that, we had two written comments received, one from Victoria Chadbourne, who wrote regarding the pop shops on Main, and the second one from Mark Swanson, who wrote regarding the GMA, the Comprehensive Plan, and AB 23-132.
We have two more. Two more.
Okay, well, we'll look into that. I'll make sure those are included. Next, we have Mark Swanson, who spoke, signed up to speak. And before you get up there, Mr. Swanson, I'd like to remind commenters that while you may speak to whatever topic you choose, we ask that you are a council candidate. You do not use this time to speak to your own campaign. With that, Mr. Swanson, if you'd like to step to the podium, you have three minutes.
Because of the complexity of what I have to present tonight, I'd like to ask the mayor for two more minutes according to the overall guidelines. Just three to five minutes, since I'm the only one to speak tonight. I've lost a piece of white paper.
No.
He knows after two minutes.
Was it not audible? No.
Very good. I'll have to talk fast, though.
I'm going to paraphrase this quote. Kay Westerbeck is a planning commissioner whose commission runs for another four years because of -- he was renewed, his commission was renewed by the city council. This is a paraphrase, but essentially, as the founder of a Facebook community called Bo-Pop, he said that Bo-Pop is aggressively trying to change the culture of this city. This man has been extremely successful. Who is Bo-Pop? They have decided against our comprehensive plan that urbanization and urban densification is the very best thing for Bothell. Now, that's not what a comprehensive plan says. And I don't want to malign their intent of the Bo-Pop people. I think likely, because I think they're decent people, that they have good intentions. However, it defies the will of Bothell residents. In 2022, Bothell residents, two-thirds of them said they were opposed to urban densification. In 2023, their answers were roughly the same on the city survey. Only 8% of respondents thought affordability was a concern. So who are these Bo-Pop people? Amanda Dodd, Jenny Alderks, Romi Alcabra, Mason Thompson, and everyone on the Planning Commission except for Claire Robson, who's the only person I could discount. These people have taken over and steamrolled this city. They're not paying attention to the science. It's a cabal. I'm asking for the voluntary recusal. Sarah Frost, Jenny Alderks, Amanda Dodd, Romi Alcabra, Mason Thompson, and all except for Claire Robson in the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up. That's all I have to sign up. However, I was told that there's a few people in the audience who do wish to speak, so if you do, please step to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi. Oh, it's good. All right, sweet. Hi. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Aura L. I was here last year, and I just wanted to make a quick public comment about welcoming week. I'm super excited that the City of Bothell is celebrating their first welcoming week. I think that it is the result of a lot of -- what's the word I'm looking for? It's almost like it's a milestone in a journey that's been going on for quite a bit. Like, I know that the -- I believe that hiring a DIA and Human Services Coordinator was such a boon to the city, and I think that they are -- it's a great way to exemplify the diversity of the City of Bothell. So I'm super excited that y'all are celebrating it for the first time this year. I hope that it becomes an annual event, absolutely. And I also like, I'm speaking on behalf of not just myself, I am not a current Bothell resident, but I was a part of the DIA Advisory Task Force last year, but I'm also here kind of representing my agency. I work for Center for Human Services as their DIB Director, and I know, like, just like from that update about the legislative priorities, behavioral health is one of the biggest aspects that can help people feel like they belong within a city. So just the fact that we are partnering with y'all and continue to work towards that belonging and that acceptance and that inclusivity and to empower the diversity of your city, I am super excited and just like very much looking towards the future. So thank you so much to the City of Bothell. Thanks so much for the hard work of like your new members and the city staff who are already here for always doing your best to promote what you believe that the City of Bothell actually needs, like empowering those voices, whether or not we agree. It doesn't -- it's less about like whether or not we agree, but that there's space for all of our opinions here in the City of Bothell, and I think that we're -- y'all are doing your best to exemplify that. So thank you so much on behalf of like someone who's worked closely with y'all for a second, and also on behalf of Center for Human Services. We are very grateful to continue working within the City of Bothell and alongside y'all. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Go ahead, step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Joy Karen. I just wanted to say thank you for the welcoming week proclamation. Welcoming, civic, belonging, yes, well, belonging and civic involvement is one of the vital conditions for health and well-being, and I just want to offer that that is a really big step. So thank you for implementing that. I think it's really important, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? That's all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, next up is projected agenda discussion. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Alderks to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Please say yes or no on a call your name. Councilmembers Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Houses 70.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, next up is Agenda Bill 23135, an update on the pop shops on Main. This is a study session, so -- and we are all set up for a study session, so we're just going to go down there. All right, next up, we have an agenda bill, but it's the pop shops on Main. City Manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and good evening again. I know there's been, there's been a lot of interest in the success of this pilot program, and I think from when I first got here, there's been, there's been questions and updates and a lot of lessons learned. So tonight, I'm excited to not only welcome staff to talk about this, but we do have guests who have been operating out of the pop shops here to talk to you as well, which I think will be a great, a great part of this update. I'm going to first turn things over, though, to our deputy city manager, Tony Call, to kick things off.
Thank you, City Manager Stannert and council. Thank you for having us here this evening. It is always a pleasure for us to come and share our work with you, so it's nice to be here this evening. Tonight with me is Jeannie Ash. She's our Economic Development Manager here at the city. She has been overseeing with the pop shops since the inception, and she's going to take us through our PowerPoint this evening. So Jeannie, over to you.
Thank you. So, good evening.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be here, sitting at your level at the table. So as Tony said, I am presenting a Pop Shops on Main presentation to you this, this evening. And this is simply a presentation, information only. There's no council action required. But after my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. So let's start with a little bit of background that back in March of 2021, council approved this retail incubator program. And with that approval came the purchase of four garden sheds to convert into retail space, as well as a Port of Seattle grant. We actually used that Port of Seattle grant to enter into a contract agreement with Mercy Corp Northwest, and Mercy Corp Northwest helped us recruit our first set of pop shop entrepreneurs. So as you know, starting a small business is cost prohibitive. Unless you have a house you can mortgage or friends and family that you can borrow money from, it's almost impossible to get a bank loan. So this program that has been approved by council really provides a leg up and a service and opportunity for women and minorities. It removes those barriers to starting a small business. So the Pop Shops on Main is actually three components. It's a concession agreement. It's a contract with the Small Business Development Center for technical assistance, as well as the infrastructure to support the program, the buildings, et cetera. So the two-year concession agreement is, in that agreement, the pop shops agree that they'll keep regular business hours, that they will provide us with 10% in lieu of rent, that they will pay 10% of their monthly gross revenue, that they will attend monthly roundtable sessions, as well as training and networking like at the chamber meetings, as well as they will do their own marketing on the outdoor, and use social media to do their own marketing. And as I said, we have a contract with the Small Business Development Center who provides classes. And then the City of Bothell built the shops and, and all the utilities and provides it at a below-market rate. So here is a history of the occupancy here. And there's a couple of things of interest here I'd like to point out, is that, first of all, we had an entrepreneur exit the program in August of 2022. That is a success. What happened was is this entrepreneur came to the program and learned that running a retail store was not what she wanted to be, and this, and this particular site was not a good fit for her. So she exited this program, and today she is happily still making art, attending farmers markets, and doing what she, her passion is, is teaching art programs. So another, another thing I'd like to point out here is that when we first launched this program, we received 12 applications. I had the hardest time convincing people that yes, you could open a retail shop in a garden shed. So, but once we got the shops up and running, and people inside, and people saw the success of the program, when we had one opening available in October of 2022, we received 74 applicant, applications for that one space. So today, we have two entrepreneurs that are, their contracts, their concession agreements end in January of 2024. And we have a third entrepreneur, her concession agreement ends in January of 2025. So here's a list of the pop shops successes. And I am, these are, this is information that I gathered from the entrepreneurs themselves. And I'm going to let them speak to that themselves. They're going to be here, be up here in just a moment, and they're going to tell you their story and about their success. But one of the things that I'm super proud of, I'm so proud of these women, and, and the work that they've done, and I just get all emotional, is that, is all of the work they did to start the pop-up at the pop shops, that was on their own initiative. That is not a city-led program. And they've had very good success. And Dani from Happy Body Soaps is going to tell you about that in a moment. So lessons learned. When this program was launched, my thought process was is that we're working with a variety of entrepreneurs who are, they know their own product, they've been making, making their own art, they've had some experience, and they all had different backgrounds. So the thought process was that I would give them a menu of educational opportunities that they could take advantage of, and then write a business plan. Well, that didn't work out that way. What happened is that they got so busy running their business, and when they weren't at the pop shops, they were at home making their product, and there was simply no time to take the classes. So I think they missed out on a lot of opportunity there. So moving forward, future pop shops will be required to take educational classes, business classes, before they even open their doors. The other thing is maintenance needs. Those, those buildings have a five-year craftsmanship guarantee on them. But I didn't account for things like cornice nests and noxious weeds, weeds and lights that always go out. So as a result, I've built in a budget that supports the maintenance of the pop shops. And then third is, you know, it's more anecdotal, and it's the demand for small retail space. I think it's evident from the amount of interest that we have. We receive calls on a regular basis from people who are interested in participating in the program. I've given several presentations to cities across the Puget Sound who want to duplicate this project. And also just the number of applicants we received last October. So there is a real demand for small retail space, and emphasis on small, affordable retail space. So now I'm going to ask my friend Stephanie to come sit up next to me and give you a presentation about Blue's Barkery.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you today. I am Stephanie Alvin, the owner of Blue's Barkery, which is a mostly organic, minimal ingredient dog bakery. I grew up here in Bothell, raised my four kids here, and I'm very happy to be a part of the business community. I started Blue's Barkery a year ago intending to be online and at markets, and came across this opportunity to apply to be a business in the pop shops. At first, it was an overwhelming idea, but I'm so glad I took the leap and opened a brick and mortar shop in November of 2022. I have seen growth in the shop that I probably would not have seen without this opportunity. Being in the pop-ups has helped me to learn the day in and day out of running a business. I've been able to network with people that I otherwise may have never had the opportunity to meet. My customers have become a joy to see weekly, meaning the dogs. Having started from scratch, I have seen a huge growth in less than a year's time, and I've seen my sales increase every month. In conclusion, this opportunity has been amazing, and I look forward to continuing, continued growth in the future. I would eventually like to make my business mobile, and being able to bring my treats to the dogs.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Priyanka. And me and my sister, Krati Aurora there, we are jewelry designers and co-founders of Bobble Jewels. We started off Bobble Jewels as a complete fashion enthusiast, always on lookout for geometrical patterns, nature-inspired stuff, statement stuff which is affordable, and yet has a global appeal to it. And looking at the fashion industry, we, we saw the lack of it in comparison to the clothing and bag and other market. We saw the lack of it in the accessories and the jewelry market. And since our mother is a real diamond and gold jewelry designer that gave us the support and motivation and the guidance to start a jewelry business. So, yeah, talking about, that's how the Bobble Jewels was born. And Bobble Jewels, Bobble Jewels is basically electric yet classic with a playful bohemian twist is how we describe our tribe and our vibe. Since we are from the East, and that's the, that's the reason we try to integrate the beautiful intricate patterns of the East and now in the West. So we try to blend in the bold geometrical patterns of the West and blend in both and create a fusion. That's why we say Bobble Jewels is a place where East meets West. And Bo in Bobble Jewels stands for Bohemian, Bohemianism, a free spirited attitude. And Belle in French is a beautiful girl. So we morphed it to Bobelle. That is a beautiful girl with a free spirited, bohemian attitude. We design all our jewelry first with hand sketches, and then we, we translate them into computer designs. And then we try to find the most affordable way. Either first we directly procure the raw material for our jewelry to make it more affordable, or we create the jewelry from the scratch, the raw materials from the scratch and assemble it together. Then it goes through a lot of quality inspection. We make sure all our jewelry is very hypoallergenic and skin-friendly. Coming on to our business point, I, we started our business in 2018 with the small and big markets. We also did international shows and big gems and jewelry shows and everything, and we got excellent response. And, which gave us the courage to make our jewelry business more professional and full-fledged. And, but however, in 2019 and 2020, due to COVID, we faced a lot of setback. But in 2021, we came across this wonderful opportunity of pop shops in Maine, which was too good to be true. And we applied for it, and we got selected. And it was a great experience. We can't be thankful enough to the city. Like, this is something that we could not even dream of. And it, the few things that I would like to highlight about things that we learned from this project is, number one is retail presence really matters. Like, we had this smallest, we were so skeptical about how are we going to manage and everything, but the smallest space, we got a lot of appreciation of that space. People loved it. They always said that we want to see more of such pop shops. And it was wonderful. And we, we got, we got, we definitely got a monetary boost, but more than that, we got an increase in, we got a lot of brand value. We have our website started since last five years, but we did not get that much response. Today, our website views are 1 million. We've got our followers. We started off with only 800 followers, something, 800 to 900 followers. And today we have 4,000-plus followers on our social media pages. We have our, we just, in the beginning of the 2023, we got an appreciation mail from Square Payment Gateway, which is the most common payment gateway in U.S., that we are one of the fastest-growing jewelry companies who comes in the top 18 percentile in the jewelry. And we are, the few things we also learned is that January of, January is the worst season of the year, which we did notice. We barely got any sales. And how important are the sandwich boards outside our retail stores to keep them in order to advertise? And we collaborated with a lot of businesses. It was fun experience to know businesses, business all across the Bothell, know, coming to know the business people and all across Bothell. And we collaborated with one of the, a 10-year-old, 10-year-old girl who makes dog jewelry. And she has, she supports a dog shelter. We collaborated with her, and we sold the dog bow ties at our store, and which was a huge hit. Bothell, the Bothell community was so fond of it. We were like surprised by the response we got, especially with the pop-up dog park nearby our stores. And we experimented with the monthly pop-up markets by collaborating with all our pop-up friends together. It was so wonderful. We are, we have a photo in social media marketing, especially my sister who takes care of social media marketing. So we took care of that part of it. And the other people, we all took our best, whichever we are good at, and collaborated. And now our pop shop markets are very popular. It's getting great response, and people look forward to it. And looking at the overall growth of our pop shops, we see the value in the retail presence and are motivated to do something in retail, but with less financial obligation, which we haven't found yet. However, we don't, however, we, yeah, obligation. However, we are, if we don't get something, until we don't get something, we are going to focus on our website, which is an international website, and would like to collaborate with the various businesses and have a, what do you call, a shop-in-shop kind of a concept, if we can get, something like that. And that's about it. Ultimately, I would just like to say Bobble Jewels has been an exciting journey. We try to understand the moods, occasion, price consciousness and taste before we design that is meant exclusive for each of them. No matter how you decide to style your look, we have worked out to decode the right piece of statement jewelry that makes you look nothing less than perfect. Thank you so much.
I'm in Danny. And I don't know if you, Danny.
While she's locking up, I don't know if you caught it, but Bobble Jewels is an international company. They actually not only sell internationally, but they, if I'm not mistaken, they have designers, or their, their designs are manufactured internationally. So, hi, Danny.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dani, and my business, Happy Body Soaps, was chosen as one of the first pop shops on Main in 2021. I grew up in the Bothell area. I've been married for 21 years and have two adult children. I'm a very creative person who has dabbled in many art mediums, and one of my dreams has always been to sell my creations at handmade markets. About 10 years ago, I joined a women's soap-making co-op. I fell in love with the process and started making soap and other skincare on my own. It slowly grew into a business, and now I get to live my dream. My brand is all about clean and sustainable skincare made with no dyes, artificial fragrance, or plastic packaging. My first experience vending at handmade markets was right here in Bothell in 2016, where I made connections that I still have today. In 2020, at the start of the pandemic, all my market events were canceled, so I adjusted my business for online markets and local deliveries. We then survived two sudden losses, and I nearly gave up. But instead, I used my grief energy and time off to make a special line of nonprofit soaps in honor of our son Alex, who was one of my biggest fans. When my business was chosen as one of the pop shops in 2021, honestly, I was terrified. But it turned out to be one of the most life-changing experiences for me. I've grown in my leadership, marketing, management, and social skills. I've also had the privilege of partnering, collaborating, and building lasting relationships within the downtown community. A few of my achievements while at the pop shops have been creating and maintaining a pop shops on Main Google page and Facebook page with thousands of views and interactions, creating and managing the pop-up at the pop shops' monthly outdoor markets, designing and distributing marketing materials, taking lead with other events at the shops like the Art Walks and Wine Walks, all of this while increasing my product line and learning more efficient ways to run my business. It hasn't been easy to get where I am today, but I'm very proud of how much I've grown, both personally and as a business. I'll be honest, the first year was difficult. But starting in January this year, I'm seeing all my hard work pay off. My sales have doubled from last year. My repeat customers have quadrupled. The monthly market attendance is growing, as well as my self-confidence. I would have really loved an opportunity to continue at the pop shops, to see where this takes Happy Body Soaps, to continue to run the monthly markets, which bring a reliable source of foot traffic to the pop shops and to our vendors, to help mentor new businesses, and to continue to gather the fruit which I've worked so hard to cultivate. Thank you so much, again, for this opportunity, for building these amazing little shops, and for continuing to support small businesses. My plan going forward is to use my skills and experience to enrich the handmade community in Bothell, which is where my heart and passion lies. I hope you consider me for future opportunities. Thank you again.
Thanks, Dani.
And thank you all for coming and talking to us. That was super cool to hear. So just thank you so much.
I, I was going to say, I forgot this was a study session. We could just talk.
Yeah.
Everyone's stories are so great. But Dani, your journey has been amazing. I had a chance to see you at some markets before the pop shops, and thank you.
What she didn't tell you is that she navigated the City of Bothell's permit system to permit the monthly pop shop, pop-ups. That is a success on its own. So our next steps is to recruit and prepare to welcome our next group of entrepreneurs to the Pop Shops on Main. And the plan is, is to market, recruit, and make a selection of our new pop shops just in time, give them enough time for the, the new pop shops to participate in Bothell Small Business Workshop Series, which the city is hosting here at, right here in the council chambers. This is open to the public at no cost, but anybody who is picked, chosen to participate in the pop shop program will be required to participate in these classes and complete the classes. So that's my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One question. Well, actually, more than one question, but the most pressing. Sorry, sorry. Is there any pop quizzes about the pop shops at, I mean, if you're doing the small business classes? I mean, I love small business classes, but that question is like, is there going to be a test at the end of it?
No, but Sean Palmer, who is a small business No, but Sean Palmer, who is a small business development advisor, has a fabulous reputation and I'm so excited and I can guarantee he'll make you do homework.
Okay, okay. So I think in my conversations with Kyle on EFNG.
Yeah.
Lots EFNG. I'm sure I'm not the only one noodling this idea is we're going to get a, ideas of ways to use EFNG. And the thought that's going in my head is could we put another row of pop shops down there?
So thank you for, for your question. And I can say that with the current consultants that we're working with, the concepts that they, all the concepts that they have presented include the pop shops in various configurations and various numbers.
And in, and in number.
Yes, numbers.
Numbers, I have to tell you because you know, the, the, on the, on our, our body soaps, I was sitting there thinking and, and the thought started germinating in my head and as you were talking, I was like, it'd be a great, it's a big lift, but it'd be a great to at some point in the process, if we continue this, have a way to gradually matriculate people, like move them into another setting where they still can have a, can, you know, become more and more independent. But that would be, that would be, you know, if wishes were fishes. Or we have extra time or budget for it. I was going to ask you, because I understand you're kind of monitoring the parking situation there. Every time I drive by EFNG, it's just jammed with parking, which is probably construction. Does that interfere with the pop shops coming, you know, business, businesses having parking where somebody's parking there all day?
So the, those are all construction workers and they're usually gone by five, no, four o'clock. I think they end at four o'clock and they're not there on the weekend.
Open up. Perfect. Okay. And then I think I, I just, you know, I appreciate, you know, the, the takeaway lessons that you learned on this, on how to do this more efficiently and more, not just efficiently, but more productively. And I think that was it, is I just really appreciate coming before us. I hope we weren't too frightening or too, I hope we were a good audience. It's been fun to come into your stores. I just, you know, wish you continued success. And thank you, Jeannie, because I know you put a lot of hats on to make this happen. So I'm going to yield the floor to everyone else.
I'll steal it while it's on before somebody else jumps in. I just wanted to say thank you for, for starting this program and running this program. I think has probably surpassed all of our expectations. I had the same question, how can we go and do more? How can we go bigger? So glad to hear that's, that's being considered for EFNG. I also wanted to say thank you to the business owners for coming out and sharing tonight about your business. It's amazing to hear your business growth, your professional growth and your personal growth stories. I mean, that's above and beyond, I think, what any of us would have expected to hear. So thank you for sharing personally about those things. And I love hearing about new thriving businesses. That's what our community is about and that's what we want to be known for. And I think we've all been talking about like, what can Bothell be known for? And I think those pop shops are, are one of those things that people recognize. I mean, hearing that other cities have reached out about it is a really positive sign. And I was, I was originally not so certain it would be great just because of location and, you know, detached from other businesses and never been done before. So I wasn't quite sure what to think, but I am a, I'm a huge fan now and I'm excited to see where this goes from here. I'm excited to see a continued growth in everyone's businesses. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I want to echo wanting to see the program expand and thank you for, I mean, there were a lot of challenges as this was getting going and, and you, you met them and I really appreciate that. And to all the shop owners, you guys have done amazing work and take a moment and just recognize that you're role models for people who were where you were when you started and that's so important. And the fact that every city event, every community event, whether it's just anything that happens in Bothell, there's something happening at the pop shops too. And that speaks to your commitment and you guys have just killed it. So well done.
Well, I'd love to jump in here too. I will echo what my colleagues have said, but you, the owner, the business owners and operators down there have really become, I think, part of the culture of Bothell in a really beautiful way. And you've contributed through the markets as well. The fact that at least two of you have done nonprofit work as well is just really impressive. And, and I just, I know that you're not just caring for people and trying to help people have, you know, bring joy into their lives, but you're also trying to help bring good into the world as well. So I really appreciate each of you for what you've contributed and how you show up in our community and I would really love to see that continue. When it comes to graduation, I have lots of questions for the ways that we are able to help support business owners move into that next step. And I, I don't know if it's quite necessarily like launching kids into college and saying like, be free little kids and like go and do, go forth. But colleges is also a supportive environment as well. And so what supportive environments are we helping our business owners move into? And so I have questions about that. I, I'm really grateful, Jeannie. Thank you for all that you've done, especially to find what kind of mentoring works for the operators, to recognize the, the kind of constraints on people's time and, and how to really help bring, and the fact that you're bringing the workshops to, to Bothell means that it's not just a benefit for the operators, that it's a benefit for any small business owner who would like to participate. And that is like kind of priming the pump and providing, and expanding your reach to empower small businesses who maybe never get the opportunity to be in the pop shops, but who still benefit from the, the learning experiences. And so I think that's just a brilliant move on your part. And it sounds like these are going to be really great with the presenter that you've recruited for that. And so I guess one of my questions is, right now, we do have an empty, an empty shop. Modest Family Solutions graduated the program and has moved on to awesome things. And I'm wondering, will that replacement be selected in the next round in January? Just kind of saving it that direct? Okay. Okay. And that makes a lot of sense, like doesn't need to be that staggered. But yeah, I just am really excited to see the next round, see the next steps. And I really do wish our operators just every success in, in finding what's next for them. So thank you.
I echo the desire to see this program expand. And again, thank you again to the owners that came out and talked to us. That was really cool to hear. And I would like it to expand, not just in terms of number, but location. You know, eventually Lot EFNG is going to get sold and there will be something there. And I would like the program to not end then. And, you know, we have other areas in the city that like, you know, as we go through and kind of vision what we want the downtown area to look like and be and talk about pedestrianization and activating the space and small retail is something we've all heard about over and over again. I mean, I'd like to make the city lousy with these things. Like the more people that are coming in to see other businesses benefits all the other businesses, they work together. And I think there's a, there's an opportunity to take something good and make it better. And then we can talk about the graduation and what that looks like in our next study session.
We still can't get over the Robert's Rules things and we invite each other to talk. First, thank you for setting up the, the program. Very much appreciate it. Very exciting. I know we spoke before my time here, so thank you. Thank you owners for, for your, for your courage to sit here and be on camera. I know not a lot of people watch, but thank you for the courage anyway. I have some questions about, are we going to have another study session about this or we, to dive into more details or is this it? I guess the question first.
At the, at the moment, our concept here is that we're bringing you information and so unless directed, we'll continue to move forth recruiting that next class of, of pop shops.
Oh, okay.
I think the mayor was referring to the comp plan guiding principles as the next study session.
Yes. I tried, I tried to look over at community development and like when we talk about small-scale retail. I have some things.
Oh, I meant not just this. I mean, we started a business program. We need to ask the business questions, right? Like, you know, what's the revenue? What's the cost? What is marketing? How much foot traffic shopping, you know, on all those trends? Because those are success criteria to graduate. Because I heard here, I know it's very positive, very positive, you know, things happen, but there's also what happens when we're not here. Because before they started this program, you know, people went through ups and downs and then they started a program and then we, you know, the pandemic suddenly was over and then everybody was doing well, but then they're going to graduate the program. Are they going to go back to where they were before they started the program? And how do we ensure that there is a support structure as council member Aldrich talked about? And these are the questions I always want to, because that incubator program, that's the success criteria, right?
So, and thank you for your question. So the, so there is, the, the pop shops as well as all of our small businesses in the community will always have access to a whole host of small business services. We, we are so fortunate in this area that we have a variety of programs that are either at no cost or low cost to our entrepreneurs. And I am happy to help anybody who is looking for services and specific, you know, type of classes and to fill the gaps of their knowledge and to help them write a business plan. You know, small businesses are most successful and they write business plans. With regards to other services, limited to how we can support them, I have made connections, you know, with them to realtors and building owners. And they have met with realtors and have, you know, looked at space themselves. But there, again, the city is limited to how we can support the private sector in terms of supporting their, supporting their business. So this program is really about, you know, giving them the leg up, giving them an entree and providing with the, the tools to start a business. The intent of is not to carry them forward. It's up to them for that.
Oh, I hear you. My, my point is we have asked for, we have given people a very low-cost.
Right.
Presence. And there's no such thing outside of this program. So when we graduate this year or next year or whenever, is that going to, is it a sustainable business model still?
So one of the things we can do, and it's, that's a really good question, Deputy Mayor. And as I sit here and think about it, one of the things that all programs should have, and we should be implementing this as we head forward to the next recruitment, is maybe a set of metrics that look at where they've started, what happened during pop shops and then have some sort of a, a tracking mechanism for after they've left the pop shop. What does that look like? Do we have that today? No. But I certainly can see as we move forward in the program that there's a value to that because we need to have some program metrics so that we understand what, what we're delivering to the community and, and how that works. So I believe that's what you're talking about. And if so, certainly I think we can pull that together for you as we move forward in the program.
Yeah, I appreciate it because that will be input to what the mayor said, asked about for the, the next 20 years, you know, we're talking about very short-term year, two, three. But in the 20 years, not only how is it going to benefit the business, the small, the small business community, the entrepreneurs, the, oh, I don't want to say moms or pops, but the, because you told me about it. Anyway, so, but how would it benefit the city also in the long term, right? Because of the, because the more successful entrepreneurs there are, the better it is for us, especially if they stay within state of limits.
Absolutely. And the more we show us that we're an incubator for small business, the better off we are as well. So good message, good thinking and we'll get that wrapped into our next set of programming. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to echo my fellow council members have said about, to me, it's about opportunity, right? And we created an opportunity and it's your success stories coming here and talking to us about your success stories that have us looking forward at what the next opportunities are going to be. And for me, I think this, the backbone of our country is built on small business. So we're, we're creating something here and right here in our own community that's allowing us to be a part of that, right? And so to me, I look at what's the next big picture? Is it, can we get youth involved in, in having some of these things? I think one of the stories was about somebody came in and did bow ties for dogs or something, right? So these are opportunities that are created that I think are impactful within our community. And the stories about small business to me, they touch, they're priceless, right? Because again, it is what this country was built on. And for us to be doing it right here and the hard work and dedication, not only the business owners, but the city to do it is just priceless. So I just want to say thank you from behalf, it's amazing work that you did.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to sneak in. I'm sorry. One more, one more thing. And then you can go, I promise you. I think if, I really appreciated council member Aldrich talking about it's like dropping a kid off at college because you know, your parents take you to Target or wherever and get you a lot of stuff and you still kind of go back home and they pay for a haircut maybe or whatever it is, right? Like you're kind of like sort of out of the house. I went to community college and technical college, so actually I wasn't really out of the house at all. But I would love to see some of that business coaching or even just opportunities to talk to someone about just, just ongoing planning support as businesses leave the program. I feel like just as, as council member Alcabra said, you know, we've given them sort of a low-cost space and I understand the program is temporary, you know, you, you, incubator being the term, right? Hatch and go. But I just really want to see a short, you know, 12 to 18 months term of just follow-up and, and really access to, I don't know, some sort of consulting or something that, that helps people transition their business so that they have just like a, I don't know the name of the kind of person I'm thinking of, but like a business expert to talk to who plans to keep going. Yeah, like a coach, somebody who can guide them with really solid advice, right? Especially as they might lose the revenue stream of people coming to the physical retail location. So maybe paying for that consulting might become a lot more complicated as you're leaving that space. So I just, I, I don't, I don't want it to be like, okay, you're 18, you're out of the house. I want that soft college transition. So I really appreciate that metaphor, Jeannie.
Thanks for articulating it. I kind of made it up as I was going along and you, you made it sound better.
Councilwoman Dog and Councilwoman Aldrich, that's really good feedback and we'll continue to look into that. And as we mentioned with Deputy Mayor, I think there's a, an after action. I'm not sure what to call it exactly off the top of my head, but there's a level of after action that needs to occur. And I think we've heard you loud and clear. So thank you.
And whatever we end up doing for the next iteration, if we can go back to our, our previous folks and, and offer it to just like, hey, you're grandfathered in, grandmothers in, maybe we'll, so yeah, that'd be great.
All right. It is 7:07. We are going to break for eight minutes until 7:15 before our next study session. All right. Welcome back everybody for the next study session, the final study session of the night. We're going to be discussing comp plan. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And we're going to get a couple of things updated in terms of, we're going to be hearing about guiding principles and council have an opportunity to weigh in and give feedback. Do you want to draw your attention to an email that was sent on Monday night at a little after five o'clock, I think 5:02 to council that has some feedback from the planning commission meeting last week too, but staff's able to, to cover any details on that that you'd like and then also hear a little bit more about the outreach from over the course of the summer. And you saw some of the materials that went out and that are in your packet. And I know I heard some positive feedback on that yesterday. So with that, I'm going to turn things over directly to senior planner Kirsten Matt to walk us through. Go ahead.
Thank you for that. So I'll just get right into what we're here to discuss tonight. So no specific action tonight. We're really looking for feedback on this very first draft, first iteration of the guiding principles for the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic update. I'll be just describing a little bit of kind of the methodology that went into where we got to where we got and then open it up to discussion. So as a quick reminder, in my perennial timeline slide, we are edging towards the end of Q3. So big, I think for us is summarizing the summer engagement. What did we hear? How are we going to integrate that into everything moving forward? We're working on beginning to draft some of the goals and policies for the elements themselves this fall, working to, we're going to draft the guiding principles and continue to revise those as we hear more from the community and from you folks and from planning commission. And then we're also beginning our EIS work. We currently are in scoping. The scoping period is open until September 27th. So an overview of our discussion tonight, Sarah Frost, our community engagement specialist is going to give us a wrap-up of our summer engagement activities. is going to give us a wrap-up of our summer engagement activities, of what we did, what we heard, what we saw. We have some very lovely infographics that our UW intern Shirley Fang put together for us. We'll also be talking a little bit about upcoming engagement opportunities. I'll be going through the draft, the draft of the guiding principles, talking about the next steps for those. And I also have a confirmed fall and winter meeting schedule, so you'll be seeing a lot of us in the next few months. With that, I'm going to move things over to Sarah.
Thank you. Happy to be here. We had a great time this summer. We, thank you to Parks and Recreation for allowing us space at the summer nights. We attended four of those. We were at the July 21st Art Night, the July 28th and August 18th Cultural Nights, and also thank you to Public Works for having us at SustainMania. At the Art and Cultural Nights, we focused mostly on what makes Bothell special. We had conversations in Planning Commission that said, well, why is Bothell's comp plan different than any other local area's comp plans? What, what is it about Bothell that makes, that defines it? So that was sort of our, our main target for those casual conversations with folks. And what we heard was that the community and community events were super important. Thanks. That the natural environment, parks and trails were a highlight, that accessibility and walkability were really important and valuable to us, and that they, that the community loves local businesses, which sort of tags on to what else we heard this evening. At some of the other events, we talked about cultural historic landmarks and which ones are important and which ones are our favorites. This sort of tied into the what makes Bothell special in that we were asking for a call-out for favorite places and spaces to sort of pinpoint those. We heard a lot about parks and trails, again, local businesses, cultural and educational institutions, and our historic structures. When we were at SustainMania, we thought, let's, let's be a little more on topic here. And so we thought we'd talk about climate. So what was important, what was a priority for the community in terms of climate? And how it, it's being managed here as much as we can. Manage is not the right word. You're going to have to work with me here on that. But the priorities were for preserving tree canopy, wildlife habitat, preparing for extreme weather events properly and adequately, that we want to maintain our great air quality, and to mitigate displacement that comes from climate. So our engagement takeaways. We are integrating all of these comments and feedbacks, which sound very conversational, and that was the point. We wanted, we're really trying to identify what the outcome that people want to see. What, what is that ideal landing place for Bothell? What, what are people's priorities? What do they love about Bothell? And how can we maintain and preserve and enhance that? So integrating that engagement feedback into the guiding principles and the draft goals and policies is how we'll be using that. And we're going to continue to refine that as we continue on. So upcoming events. So this week, today, we are at Welcoming Week. We had a little table out front for a little additional information. We'll be joining KCLS Civic Saturday this week, this Saturday. Come on by. That's one of their regular scheduled programming, and we're just, we're happy to be part of it. The big one is October 26th. Save the date. We are doing a pretty fun open house. It's for the Day of a Lifetime Tour. And we're basically going to take a tour of all of the elements that are, that are part, not all the elements, many of the elements that are part of the comprehensive plan, so that we can break it down into nice bite-sized pieces. This is going to be partly educational and also partly getting feedback on, on those different elements as well. We'll be at Skyview Middle School. It's open house style, so drop by when and how you can. We are, we're going to be continually updating our website with more confirmed services that will be provided. We are looking into childcare, potential for food, a lot of other things that are going on. But raffles, games, activities, family-friendly, please come. It's going to be a good time. We'll be at Trick or Treat on Main Street for more of those casual conversations, getting to know people, getting more information out and building those relationships. And then stay tuned for an early 2024 Open House, Part Two.
Thank you, Sarah. So now we're just going to get into our discussion on the draft of the guiding principles. I did want to bring focus to the relationship between the guiding principles and the city vision focus areas. It really touches on the same kind of span of breadth of the council vision, and we want to make sure that that connection is clear as that implementation component. So a reminder of what we've kind of discussed before, so we have had a prior meeting talking about the 2015 Vision Statement and what we want to see in the 2024 Plan. So in terms of some of the things we heard from Planning Commission, Council, as well as over the summer and our engagement activities, how informing, how we kind of reworked some of the guiding principles. So we heard a lot about climate and the environment as needing to take a more central role. Again, what is unique about Bothell? How can we make our guiding principles have that really specific unique flair to have what Bothell looks like now and how we want it to look in the future? We heard a lot about kind of trying to condense and reduce the text to be a bit of a shorter document, a bit more concise, paying a lot of attention to the language, making sure we're using the proper language, really careful about word usage, emphasizing equity and inclusivity, highlighting that connection with our higher institutions of learning, interconnectedness both within the city as well as within the region and with our adjacent jurisdictions, an increased emphasis on multimodality, particularly with the changes coming with the transit element, a focus on the sort of neighborhood level scale of the community, looking at economic stability, cooperation with our government, other governmental bodies within the region and state, and then again, word choice, again, being really, really intentional about the words that we use. So as we were kind of combing through the existing principles and looking at the feedback of how we want to try and maybe reshape some of those, there were six themes that really kind of rose to the surface through staff review that seemed to cover the range of both what's in the existing principles that we might like and the things that we might want to adjust. So those six themes are, as currently standing, community and cultural strength and resilience, climate and the environment, equity, connectivity, balance, and economic vitality. And so this is a version of the draft guiding principles. We had had a study session last week with Planning Commission, kind of talking through some shorter versions and some longer versions. The shorter versions were the ones that could fit on one sheet, and so that's kind of the direction I went with that to kind of start to think about how this could be a more graphic document. The goal here was really calling out these six primary kind of areas of focus and how they relate to the principles, and also how they relate back to like an introductory statement that kind of covers everything. So this is, again, the very early days. I am not a graphic designer by any stretch of the imagination. So this is me just trying to put something together that really evokes what we heard, and again, this sort of revisions to the existing guiding principles. And once we kind of get at a better sense of where the text might be landing, these will be put into something a bit more graphic. We do have a graphic designer as a subconsultant with our consultant, who's helping us with some iconography, and will be helping us with some of these design components. And so at this point, I think, is when I would love to get some feedback. Let me know your thoughts. Obviously, again, this is the first iteration. There'll be plenty of room to continue to refine and change things. I will be taking these to our working group on Thursday. And again, this is our working group that we'll have throughout the life of the project. We meet every two months on different topics. They are representative of a wide breadth of the community. Our consultant put together this group of folks through a bunch of pre-engagement interviews. And so we'll be doing a workshop with them Thursday at lunchtime on this. And these will also be presented at the open house for folks to read, comment on, provide feedback. So, yeah.
First, for a non-graphic designer, this is pretty amazing.
Thank you.
So, thank you for doing this. I, I read through the packet and all that stuff. I think in general, it's a great direction. I love the Skyview Open House. Looks like you heard us loud and clear. We need to go to where people are, not have them come to us. So that's awesome. Looking forward to it. And the one in March. The infographics are amazing. I mean, as a, I'm relatively new to this whole thing. So as a just a regular resident, it was easy for me to understand what we're doing. So I hope we get really good feedback once we do the open house and we show them the cool infographics. Easy to, easy to consume information, you know, not very technical things, but here's what we're trying to do. And at some point, once we get to the technical pieces, also, that's another challenge where, now how do you make that, simplify it for the, for the, for the, for the majority of people to understand who are not in this day-to-day? Those are the two things. I, I just want to say thank you. Thank you all for the, for the amazing work so far.
I just really want to give a shout out to the intern who provided those graphics. They look really great. And a shout out to whoever on this team worked, found the intern and worked with an intern. I really love seeing opportunities like that to, to bring in students in our community. We have two awesome higher education institutions here in town, and there are lots of opportunities, I think, for internships. And the Community Development Department is one of the best places, I think, kind of in the city structure for, for those internships to take place. So I always love seeing that. More of that, please. And, and it really does show a nice, I think, summary of what you've been able to do over the summer in terms of getting people's feedback. I know that I was very excited to see something as approachable as what makes Bothell special on the Engage Bothell website. That was just a very, I think, welcoming, approachable way of getting people involved in urban planning and development, right? It sounds so scary. And, and you made the process, I think, not scary for people. And that, that really makes a big difference, I think, in how approachable it is. And then I also want to appreciate, like, just say that I appreciate getting the draft principles in one document. I could very much see the way it was sort of like, you know, combined with previous to make a nice compare/contrast. But being able to compare them actually side by side is really useful, and so I'm glad that we have that. There are two words in the introductory statement that I'd really love to see. And I don't know if you can work them in there, but interdependent and holistic. I believe that that is in line with the, the vision of, of the city that we established. And in, it's almost like, I just feel like they're missing. Like, you're getting the concepts, but those words aren't there. And so if there is a way to work them in, would love to see it. If it doesn't happen, I'm also going to be fine. And then one question I have is, I'd really love to see these, these 10 statements, maybe, I don't know, color-coded or somehow related back to the vision statement, so we know which of those elements relate to which vision priorities. That would be, I, I have not had time to go through this document and do that for myself. So if you were able to do that, I think it would be useful to help us see how all of the work that we're doing is working together and connecting. But I think this is really excellent work. I'm really looking forward to the next steps. I, you mentioned the focus group that is coming up, and I'd love to hear a little more about how recruitment took place for that and like, you know, what, what kind of equity blends has been used in, in the recruitment of, of the people who are going to be doing, like, contributing to that work? And so with that, I will stop and would love to hear your feedback.
I can give a little bit of information on that, but I think it might be appropriate at some point when we come back to talk more about engagement. Our, our consultant Ben Hahn, who did that work for us, can probably give you a much more robust background on all the work that he put into that. I know it was a multi-month process. Because of kind of where we haven't necessarily done a fantastic job of that in the past, it was a little bit of kind of working from the ground up for us to really establish those relationships. And he's done a really fantastic job of taking the full giant list of all the potential contacts we have in the community, calling through those, calling tons and tons of people, doing a ton of pre-engagement interviews, putting together folks that were excited, but also wanting to make sure that we were representing maybe people in the community that we haven't talked to before, we haven't heard from before. And so we do have folks from different interfaith communities, folks from different local environmental groups, just residents. I know we have some, a woman I spoke to at SustainMania, who's a mother and student at UW-Bothell, who's really engaged in the community. So I can also put together some more information on that too as well, if you want like a memo on that process. That might be something.
Yeah, I would love that. I think that would be good to see. And, you know, it's really great to hear the work that our consultant is doing. So glad to hear that.
Do we have, I feel like I'm going to sound really my age when I ask this, but do we have young people participating, like, like middle schoolers, high schoolers? I am always fascinated looking at the kids who participate on like the North Shore Schools Foundation work and just the different ways that, that, that the youth will engage if we invite them to. And this is the Bothell that we're shaping for them, right, for them and people their age. A lot of these changes are not going to be for me or for, or for my parents, for goodness sake. So I, what is the plan there? I'll stop talking.
Yeah, that group is, is an adults group. But I know Ben has gone to the Innovation Lab High School. They have a climate change, like, extracurricular group, and he's gone and kind of spent some time at those meetings. We have started to talk to, now that school is back up and running, ways to connect with existing activities that they have. It was tricky over the summer because their offices were not responding back to us, unfortunately. So once, now that school is back in session, that's one thing we've talked a lot about, is like, where are some of those opportunities? Were they, might already be having an event? I know that we had last spring a DEI event with the students and their families, so kind of looking at some of those opportunities. So it is something we're looking at trying to do a little bit more as we're getting back into the swing of things with school.
That's awesome. The only thing I would recommend is Innovation Lab is a, I think the term is magnet school. You have to apply and get in. There's limited space. And kids in Bothell.
It's a choice school.
It's a choice school. My kid's not that old yet, so I, I'll learn the terms later. But kids who live in Bothell can go to any of the North Shore Schools. So I would love to see just, just a call-out to, hey, do you have an opinion? We do want to hear it for real. Please come. Here's a Starbucks gift card, or whatever kids like these days. So something like that. I'm sorry I'm adding money to your budget, but however it works out. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I think as part of the October Open House with, at Skyview, there will be outreach directly towards parents and students for that as well. So we're hoping to get some engagement there too.
Awesome. Thank you. And I, aside from the youth, I really love this. I, I feel like you heard all of us and all the things that we agree on are in here, which is fantastic. The last sentence has the Oxford comma and the sentence before that doesn't, so I would just match either way. I'm pro-Oxford comma, but I don't want to start that.
I am also pro-Oxford comma, so I'm.
I know, I like to start.
This is a pro-Oxford comma room. Also, congratulations. You're at that phase of life where you say, I don't know about the kids these days.
I'd love to jump in on what Councilmember Dodd said. Would you consider doing a, an open house for youth, for like middle school, high school, college? Because sometimes the messaging is slightly different, if you haven't noticed. And, and I, I think it would be really beneficial. I'm, I'm having conversations with my middle school and high schooler around the comp plan process and, and how they could engage. And they're hesitant. Like, it, it's like we haven't found the hook. And I'm, I'm wondering, could I encourage you to think about that? And.
Yes. Let me look at the resources that we have and what we can do as an exercise. Last week, I was at a, an event with fellow planning directors from across the state, and one of the sessions I attended was engaging youth in planning. I think it was like, the youth, showing my age, but.
We're all there. It's okay.
You know, what would be some exercises that could truly and authentically engage somebody who can contribute regardless of age? And a charrette with Legos, for example. Seems like a really simple way of approaching things, but that could be an exercise that we could try. And it was amazing to see a group of planners from across the state playing with Legos for about 40 minutes, trying to build the ideal city in Chelan. We have a couple of focus areas in Bothell that I think we'd benefit from kind of a fresh perspective. So I really like that idea. I think we could look at some resources and, at the very least, try something at the open house too. Have some sort of exerciser table to that effect.
Sounds awesome. Sounds like that, that presentation you were at came at a good time.
I'm going to say I'm always for Legos. I'd like to go to that. And that reminded me of a different kind of youth. Thank you for having childcare at the open house. As a single mother to a seven-year-old, he doesn't like to talk about, you know, comprehensive planning yet, despite my best efforts. So it is nice to, I think, for anyone to have an opportunity to. So it is nice to, I think, for anyone to have an opportunity to engage without also trying to entertain your small child, so much appreciated.
I have heard a focus in this conversation on engaging youth and engaging kids, and I think that's really important because, like, we all know that when we make zoning changes, nothing happens right away. Like, there's time and it takes decades for the fruit of our actions now to be born. I was gonna say bear fruit, but I'd said fruit earlier. I would almost like to see a guiding principle that we make decisions with that future in mind or with like how Bothell is going to be experienced by our kids. Because I think that's really what we talk about when we talk about a lot of these changes is like, what's Bothell gonna look like when my kids, who are six and eight, are on their own? Like, where are they going to live? Like, how, how are they going to engage with Bothell? And I don't know how that would be phrased or what that would look like. But the one guiding principle that I just, I guess I don't quite understand is balance. Like, I guess I'm not sure what the positive statement there is. And I don't really know what that means.
So balance is more kind of like a topic area that seemed to touch on a lot of the sort of different things in here. So balancing transit versus where we have maybe land use or balancing different types of land uses or understanding our space within the region. So this kind of overall concept that seemed to tie into a lot of the guiding principles or, you know, prior vision statements.
Okay. I don't know. I'd still, I'd still, I'd like to see a guiding principle. Like, I feel like in local government, a lot of the like actual real incentives, not saying this is what everybody makes their decisions on, but a lot of the actual incentives are, are really short-term. You know, we have to run popularity contests every four years. You know, it's, it's difficult to get somebody making decisions with the long-term in mind. And I'd, I'd like to encapsulate that idea somewhere in here, that like we make decisions not just thinking about us and what we like. Like, we make decisions thinking about what our children and their children will need.
Thank you.
I should look at my notes to see if I have anything else. Oh, I wanted to touch on something that they said in the last presentation, which isn't really germane to this discussion, but we're talking about the comp plan, so I want to say it. You know, we have had a lot of apartment buildings go in and there are like walls of concrete that really destroy the streetscape. And I would love for those to not happen anymore. And I would love for us to have guidance when those go in for a certain amount of retail frontage in each one and, and smaller units required. Because we, we get a lot of these large projects and, you know, they throw, you know, six, eight thousand square foot units in there and they try to run out as few of those as possible because that's not what their actual business is. I would like to see more granular retail, more walkable retail, and I'd like it to be everywhere in the different downtown designations. Because when we build a, a block of a street that is just a concrete block, it's gonna stay that way forever, or at least for my lifetime and my kids probably. So I'd, I'd like to, and I'm not saying we need to like totally reopen everything in the downtown core, but, but I would like to see more small businesses. And I guess there's nothing after the end. A period instead.
I'll also jump in and say, if there are going to be large stretches of concrete, can there please be public art on them? And can they please be lined with trees? That, like, if that has to happen, there are ways to not just create, you know, heat sinks of concrete and to make it a more welcoming and inviting space.
I'm gonna leap in here. I, I'm sure you've thought of it. One way to encourage kids to be part, and kids by meaning live at home with their parents and they're going to school, K through 12. One way to encourage kids to participate is when you have a teacher who's all fired up over it and says, you will earn extra credit if you go, there's this thing happening. And there are classes at, at the high schools and I'm sure some of the social studies classes in the middle school, school level, that if you were to call the different schools, I don't know which of you has the most free time to do that, and say, from the city of Bothell, we would love to talk with a teacher who would like to encourage their students to be part of shaping Bothell's future. Who would, who, what teachers would we talk to about that? And then just talk to them and I, I, I think you'd see a lot of kids respond to that. And then I love this. I love seeing you guys this summer. Thank you for giving some of your summer to us. My only comment is that turning the page to the crosswalk of the 2015 vision statements to the draft of 2024 and the rewriting. I'm all about, when you write, you, your first part is gonna pull people in and the rewrite is incredibly sterile and dry. And the, the language before was sad, and I'll just quote, celebrates and respects its picturesque setting by achieving harmony between the built and the natural environment. So if somehow we could put aesthetic in, back into that proposed rewrite, it's going, it's gonna engage a reader much more so though, because there's eye fatigue on keywords that are used over and over and over again and people's brains start to tune out. I mean, it's a sad reality, but my brain is one of those brains that will tune out if there's, if, if it's vocabulary that's just overused. So if there was, be some way to put some aesthetic back into that proposed rewrite, don't get rid of what's necessarily what's in that. But, you know, make it tastier. That would, that, that's my only input on that.
Yeah, and I hear that for sure. That's a really good comment. I think it's hard, I think that probably happened because when we were trying to rewrite and make things more concise, sometimes that language might be the first to go. But I definitely hear you there and I think as we're kind of rewriting and working these, we can think of some ways to keep it concise and make it a little bit more colorful. Yeah, thank you.
I echo that, I think, I don't know if this is the right terminology, but word poetry, something that is engaging and draws people in. I got the same kind of feeling when I read through it and I had to check myself and say, is it, am I just being too critical or is it really feel less? Uh, I'd say like less pulling me into it to want to learn more. And I, I think it, I think there are ways to, to edit a little bit more to make it easier to read and more engaging to read. But I, I totally understand when you consolidate something, it loses that. And so I think there's a balance there in that. But my feedback is just a couple, couple items. In the first sentence of the introductory statement, we say Bothell is vital. And I was curious, what do we mean by that? Did we mean vital or did we mean something like vibrant? If we could talk about that a little bit?
I think I was really trying, we were really trying to think about vitality and I think I might have pulled that word from the original introductory statement in terms of Bothell being this kind of vital and vibrant place. But definitely heard if it's confusing, that means it's probably something we should look at revising and making more clear.
Okay, I was just thinking, I, that wasn't my original thought. My original thing I noticed was that we say vital there and then a little bit farther down, we say Bothell continues to be a vital economic driver, so we're using it really twice. I think vibrant feels better to me. It's, I understand what vibrant is rather than vital, so if it works to update that, I would, I would love to see that. I think we should also order, think about ordering these by order of importance or relevance. I think, you know, climate change and sustainability is important, but one of our most core essential roles of, of government is this, actually the second point, human, cultural, educational and emergency municipal services. So I would, I'd like to see kind of a reordering of these by, I don't know how you do by importance because they're all important, they're important enough to include here, but look at, look at the order and maybe rearrange the order a little bit. Similar to kind of on that, on that thought track, the last item, it could be a good opener as number one, but also I was thinking and looking at the conclusatory statement and it's, it's very brief and we also mention education in the introduction. So I'm wondering, you know, perhaps we do end with number 10 and maybe we strike the conclusatory statement since it is so brief and specific and move that content into the introduction. That might make sense to do that. So just a thought as we're looking at this and continue to iterate on it. I think the last item, similar to what Councilmembers Orns conveyed, is some of it is a little bit long, like number four, it's one sentence, but it's four lines plus one word on the sixth line. I think when you do that with commas and semicolon, it, it makes it long and more difficult to read. So I'd like to see anywhere there's a semicolon or really long sentences, have those be broken up into more bite-sized pieces. But overall, thank you. It's great and looking forward to seeing more.
Thank you. What about welcoming instead of vital in the first sentence? Maybe it's because it's welcoming week, but just start off a little neighborly. I'm, I'm asking you just because you brought it up in my head, but yeah.
That word did feature in our council vision too. I really appreciate you, Councilmember Manki, because like, it's, it's just funny how different people are. I'm like, talk about the kids! And you're like, here's a line-by-line suggestion of the things that I went through. And it's just, it's like, it's interesting, like, because I really liked what you had to say and it's just so different.
Thank you. There's something else I can go into the upcoming schedule for you guys, just so you know when you're gonna see our faces over and over again?
We, we like you, like, it's okay.
Oh, I did forget to mention some of the Planning Commission feedback, which I know I provided in an email, but wanted to talk about here as well. So again, they had kind of the longer and the shorter version with us kind of recommending a shorter version in order to provide a more graphic document. They, for the most part, major, almost majority agreed that they prefer to pithier, more concise statements, particularly if it's gonna be even more visual. I started trying to put imagery into it and then it just got way too messy and you couldn't read anything.
Graphic design is my passion.
So I took that back out. And then one comment that came up that was very much heard and something I was already thinking about was for the cultural resources-related guiding principle to make sure we're not just focusing on preservation, but also identification of resources that may not have been prioritized in past. So I will be working on that one with our historic preservation consultant that's working on the Telling Bothell Full Story Project to kind of see how we can make that a little bit better. Commissioner Jones suggested potentially identify and preserve, and so we thought that that sounded nice. So next steps, like I mentioned, we're reviewing these with our working group on Thursday. There will be a review opportunity at the open house. Some of the comments here have given me some ideas of ways that we could engage with the community on, on those, so that's cool. And then work again, working on revisions based on all this feedback. This will be an iterative process, so you'll, you'll be seeing them again. And then upcoming meetings. So our next meeting is going to be the big boy, Land Use Housing and Economic Development Meeting on the 20th with Planning Commission. This will be a large focus of which will be on the growth targets and the HB 1220 requirements. And we will have the draft, future land use map alternatives there as well. We'll be tying that land use and housing together, of course, and then talking a little bit about establishing priorities when it comes to economic development. In general, our goal with all of our meetings over the fall is to establish those priorities, those sort of implementation component of what is the end goal for all of these topics, which will allow us as we're kind of going in revising goals and policies to make sure that those are setting us up for success when it comes to those priorities.
Can I quickly interject? Could you send us this slide?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then on the 4th, we're coming back to Planning Commission on climate, natural environment, parks and shorelines. My goal was to kind of group these topics together in a way that made sense in terms of how they were related. And then October 17th, we'll be coming back here to talk to you all about land use, housing and economic development, give you the feedback we've heard from Planning Commission. And then in November 1st, we'll be going to Planning Commission to talk about subareas. The big focus there is Red Barn, Country Village. And the initial kind of visioning and outreach process for that is beginning this month. So we'll have some feedback view on how that went and kind of some direction of where we're thinking to go. Again, that is one of our candidate countywide growth centers, so part of that we'll be making sure we meet the requirements for that. And we'll also be talking about the cultural resources element formerly known as the historic preservation element and urban design. And what we'll have met, hopefully, we're trying to meet with the Landmark Preservation Board before that meeting, so we can hopefully get some feedback and priorities from them. And then mirroring the climate, natural environment, parks and shorelines discussion here on the 14th of November. And then getting further into November, you'll get a meeting with our transportation folks on the 15th. The 21st will be coming, oh, sorry, that's for Planning Commission, otherwise it'll be a little bit later down the road. On the 21st of November, we're coming back to this body to talk subareas, cultural resources and urban design. December 6th, we'll be talking about capital facilities, human services and utilities, now that we are separating the human services element from housing. And we'll give you a presentation on the October Open House at that meeting. I'm sorry, again, that's gonna be Planning Commission, I'm getting myself confused, there's so many meetings. So the 6th, we're planning Commission here on the 12th to mirror that same presentation. And then again, just ongoing engagement throughout early 2024. Our current schedule has us having our public drafts by the end of February of next year. So we're trying to time our open house for the drafts sometime soon after that in early March. I believe in January too is when we're gonna have our preliminary draft EIS out, so stay tuned for that. And I think as of right now, we're tentatively scheduling a meeting on December 5th for you all to meet with the transportation folks, but that is not 100% confirmed yet.
And I'll just jump in really quick too with a kudos of, I think, staff heard some of the conversations just last week in study session about, Councilmembers Orns, one of the things you asked about was getting dates up on the website. So if you do go to the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan website, all of the dates that were just discussed of when this is coming forward to Planning Commission, City Council and the open houses, including then what the content is projected to be, is all available right on that front page. So I see you writing really fast, but I'll also encourage you to go to the city's website and go to Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. It's live right now, so thank you all for getting that up there.
Yeah. And that is all I had. If you have any additional written feedback on anything we talked about today, of course, the guiding principles, it's a lot of text, feel free to email me as well. And that's all we had tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We appreciate it.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
The transport, the previous slide, you had the transportation thing with the middle of November with Planning Commission, but?
Yes.
The next slide, yeah, but it's not, so I assume it's gonna be sometime next?
To be, to be confirmed, I think I'll have to defer to my colleague behind me for confirmation. But I believe the plan of right now is December 5th, but that's kind of gonna depend on making sure that our consultant, their consultants are ready for that. But loosely, that is, that's what we're aiming for, is December 5th.
Oh, I see.
I don't have it on there yet just because it's not fully confirmed, but.
Okay, because the reason is because you have the, the cadence, you know, you have a planning commission, two weeks later or a week later, you have the city council and, but that didn't, that one was, it's like, whoa, where did it go?
Yeah, I didn't want to speak out of turn in case it wasn't fully confirmed, so.
That makes sense. And I look forward to seeing the infographics on the, the principles. You know, I know we talked about, a lot about text, but once you have visual representation, that might actually talk to some of the gaps that were talked about, mentioned today.
Yeah, and I think now that we've had a chance to come to Planning Commission, come to council to talk about the, the reworking of the principles, it'll be helpful for me to get with our graphic designer and think about ways to, to organize that.
Because that would attract somebody and then get them to read, especially if it's not, you know, five-line sentences, then, and then just a small visual compact thing will just get them.
Yeah, for sure.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have council conversations. Council.
Hey, subtle hint, but I have nothing until, I know. I know, so, you know, maybe you'll spark something, so be very careful.
I, I was gonna bring up one thing. I debated talking about this and I've decided to go for it. Because why not? You have a chance to be on public record.
Because why not? You have a chance to be on public record, what, once a week, three times a month? BOPOP, Carrie Westerbeck did indeed found BOPOP in late twenty eighteen. And I joined spring twenty nineteen and my involvement and was great. I learned a lot. Um, basically he presented ideas to folks through videos and sending articles. And I read them and sometimes I was like, that seems made up. And sometimes I really liked it. I left when I was appointed to the Planning Commission because Commissioner Curd was already a member and that felt weird. Um, I met with Director Cotterman and our city attorney at the time, Paul Byrne, to make sure that, I was like, this seems weird. We shouldn't have like multiple people. And they were like, there's nothing legally wrong with it, but like, it can be weird. Someone mentioned that a number of city council members had once been members of the same Rotary Club and it just feels weird. So I don't know how people get a list of BOPOP members. I'm not sure where one would be. I don't know that councilmembers Al Kopper or Alderks have ever been involved other than going on a walking tour. But the list was wrong and I'm happy to talk to anyone about it anytime. Thank you.
I, I have BOPOP his, history. You know, I joined it. I don't, can't tell you when, but at one point.
We're just talking about the Facebook group, right?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Well, that's the thing. The Facebook group is for discussion. It's not like a member list either. And I'm not in it and I haven't been since twenty twenty. So yeah, it's kind of a.
At one point I exited and I can't tell you why. There's things about strong towns that I appreciate. And then there's other things I'm like, you can't, you can't put a, you can't say everything that works in the Midwest where it's flat is going to fit in a mountainous, you know, marine situation. But I do like some things about strong towns, but other things I'm just like, no. But, but anyway, that's my, my short.
I feel that way about most things.
I was gonna say the Lime scooter, I tried to ride up to twenty-eight degrees with you. Not everything that works in the Midwest works where there's hills. But yeah, and that's the same. Anytime you have a source of information, you're not gonna agree with all of it. Otherwise, maybe you should take a nap and get your opinions back.
I would, I would hope. Anybody who, that's when the Kool-Aid comments start coming out.
There's a fortunate thing about the kind of people who run for office though, like I, I feel like we often have our own opinions.
I'd like to share some of my experiences with BOPOP. Um, and as a planning commissioner and as a council member, um, the advice that I got from our city attorney at the time was just be careful about, you know, too many people responding to one comment, like putting a comment in one thread, because then that becomes a public meeting online. Um, and so I was not discouraged from leaving the group of good source of information, kind of broad urban planning development, um, you know, content, which was, you know, when people, I, I actually really admire when members of council and planning commission are doing extra work outside of their, like, sort of paid volunteer gig to understand their sort of paid volunteer gig. Um, and that was something that I really respected. So my understanding, uh, based on the advice from council that I received was just don't turn comment sections into public meetings. Um, and that was, that has been the advice I have been following over the last two years.
I left my gavel up there. But this seems to be wearing out, so.
I do have, if we are done with that topic of conversation, um, I would like to, uh, just sort of put it out there, um, how is it going with our, um, speed cameras by schools that have now been, they are running and doing their thing? Has anybody experienced it? What is that like for you?
I haven't sped through schools yet.
Have you gotten warnings yet?
Were you doing that before?
You know, uh, I'll let, uh, chief, uh, I'll defer to the chief with the, he's not here, so you're not gonna know.
Well, this is just a conversation with council.
The chief did mention, um, before the meeting, there were some technical difficulties, I think with the couple cameras. So I think they're just getting up and running now fully. Um, I did see the ones by Crystal Springs on Sunday when I drove to the park. Um, so it was good to see them there, but I also had thoughts of, um, wondering how it was going. So I would love to hear an update, I think, maybe after a couple of weeks of fully functioning, um, I'd be on board with that as well.
I was just responding to, uh, Amanda's, have you been speeding before? It's like, hmm, he's not here, so you never know.
Yeah, he could not possibly find you talking on this meeting.
Yeah, I do have to say, uh, I drove past my old high school in another school district. High school, not elementary school. And they had speed cameras on both corners of the, the streets. And I thought, you know, there'll be a day where we'll be having that conversation, but they're not messing around.
As, as a homeschooler, I have not yet driven through a school zone during school hours, but I do walk my neighborhood a lot. And so yes, I've definitely seen them. I just haven't seen them in action. Um, and so I, you know, I would just welcome, uh, the public, you know, for those who have experienced it, because, you know, there's, those are busy intersections, um, during the day, um, around school time, especially parents who are doing drop-off. So I, I just really would love to hear from the community about, you know, it's something new. And, um, and people are gonna have thoughts and experiences to share and I'm open to hearing them.
All right. Adjourned.